Controlled by technology. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. And would you please, as we call this meeting in order, would you please rise for the invocation? Remain standing for the pledge to the U.S. and to the Texas flag. Charles, if you will.
Let us pray. Father God, we come this morning thanking you for this day. For truly, this is a day that you have made. Father, realize that, Father, the court is not in session, and the courts of heaven is always in session. And we pray your blessings from the higher court to this lower court. We thank you for the judge and all the commissioners and everyone that is a part of this. And we pray, Father, peace, their paths, all understanding, will rest upon this court, through this court, and everything on the agenda will be done decently in order. And we thank you for that peace that you have given us, peace in this county that is called one of the greatest counties in this state. And we thank you. We glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Would you please be seated? Ms. County Clerk, do you have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners present, any public comments? No? I just make one, again, a reminder. We are talking about, we've been talking about hurricane preparedness. And I just remind you again, there is the potential of a tropical disturbance in the Gulf of Mexico as we speak, and the potential of it coming into our area. It's 50, 60 chance this weekend. Doesn't look to be as a hurricane, but could be a tropical storm. Could be winds, could knock out power. So make sure you have a three-day supply of food and water, baby formula, prescriptions, batteries, dog food, all of those. What was that?
Toilet paper.
Toilet paper. No, I don't want to run on toilet paper out in the county, okay? Father, what you have in stock will be good enough. But anyway, just be prepared. Don't get caught in the dark, no pun intended. The potential is there, and we need to continue that kind of preparation all the way through about the end of August 1st of November. With that, let the record show that Commissioner Dobianski is absent. And I had a call from Commissioner Walker. They had a water emergency, or no water emergency, at Precinct 3. She's trying to get that handled, and will be here as soon as she can, if she can make it at all. We do have a quorum, so we'll proceed with the county's business. Before us, we have consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, let me see if six is there, and number... and number six. Okay. Number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Number five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for April 2021 authorized advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. That would be pages, see page four of our agenda. And then item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. And there are about five or six of those commissioners. So give you a moment to review again if you need to.
Is there no questions? I'm going to read consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
Say it. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett, on consent agenda items three, four, five, and six as a further discussion. Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That'll be a 3-0 vote. We will go to agenda item number seven. Grimes County Commissioner, Precinct 2, David Dobianski. He's not here, but I am going to take the lead. And I would ask our county clerk to meet me in front. Too much delay. Well, that's right. I'll go back that way. Vanessa Brzezinski, years of service. Presented to Vanessa Brzezinski in appreciation for your 10 years of loyal and distinguished service to Grimes County. You make a difference, April 27, 2021. Congratulations. That was a nice life. Okay. Did you want to make a speech or anything?
No.
We're going to table Ms. Castro's presentation. She had some business to take care of this morning, so we will get her back on the agenda. With that, we'll go to agenda item number eight. Grimes County Human Resources Director, Toledo Coleman. Review, consider, and take action on the 2021-22 renewal notice and benefit confirmation provided by Texas Association of Counties for county employee health and dental benefits or attachment number eight. Ms. Coleman, are you out there? I thought you'd be anxious to be here. It's nice and cool.
I know, right?
Yeah.
A little toasty in my office. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So it's that time again to renew our county health insurance for medical and dental. I provided you with some attachments with some different variations and option plans provided by TAC, who is our current medical provider. I also have Ms. Ashley here, who is our health and benefits coordinator, liaison for TAC, to answer any questions anyone might have and to explain why some of the rates went up as they did.
Okay.
So with the court's permission, I will turn it over to Ashley.
Sure. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
We're doing well.
Good. So yeah, as Toledo was saying, I just kind of hear it just to kind of answer some questions. I can go through the overview if you want first, or I can answer questions first, however you guys want to.
I think, why don't you go with your overview? And then if we have any questions after the fact, then that'd probably be the best time, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So you guys do have the renewal packet with you. Just to give you an overview, the pool did see an increase as far as the pool needed amount for this year, and that was at a 7.3. So when you're looking at your renewal rates, based on what you guys have received, you are given, basically, just looking at how you guys performed with this last plan year. So overall, when I'm looking at the numbers for you all, as far as your demographic rate, as far as the age of employees, what the cost of medical care is in this area as well, you guys run about what the pool is seeing across the state. So within saying that, more than likely, you guys will always be around that pool needed amount unless we do some additional changes. And those changes aren't necessarily just with looking at your plan changes, but also looking at the wellness portion of it as well. So we use the Healthy County Program as a long-term strategy to help give groups, basically, the boost to kind of get over the hump in regards to that and helping wellness and making sure that your loss ratio, as far as what you guys are paying in and what we're paying out, is closer to our kind of break-even point there. So just being mindful of that, I wanted to throw that out there for you guys. And that's really the biggest thing. So when you got your renewal notice and you see that increase, it's about where the pool needed amount was.
Good morning.
And because you guys, like I said, the cost of care, you're only like .7, .6, younger than the pool average, and cost of care is about the same distance as well. That's why you guys will, and as you have seen over the years, kind of what the pool needed amount is, you guys fall right in line with that, too.
I thought out of the 254 counties in Texas, that we were in the top 10 of healthy counties.
So yes, you guys, as far as participation, there, I have seen, I have your ones, because I'm on the plane. But yes, so there is participation in the program. I think that there are some things that we still can do to help make sure that, like I was saying, your loss ratio, those claims that we're paying, that those are starting to see a positive impact within that as well. And that's why you'll see some of those non-grandfathered plans recommended there, just because with a non-grandfathered plan, you're going to have your preventive services covered at 100% for employees. So their annual exam visits, any colonoscopies, well, colonoscopies in general is something that the pool does provide, covered at 100% for employees. But any mammograms, prostate exams, all of those types of things are now going to be covered at 100%. Versus if you're a grandfather, then you're subject to your copay and your deductible as well with those things. So that's really where the, you'll see the difference with the non-grandfathered plans versus grandfathered plans that you have. And also, one thing that I was discussing with Toledo's previously, once the ACA was ruled out back in 2010, we weren't sure what was going to happen, like what everything was going to be.
Right.
And so the message that came from TAC was like, hold on to your grandfathered plan. But now, over the years, it's been 11 years, we've seen that really our groups that have non-grandfathered plans are actually running a lot better than our groups that have grandfathered plans. So they're seeing a positive impact. I attribute that to those preventive exams being done to where a financial burden of having to pay your copay, having to pay your deductible to get those things done is now no longer a barrier. So that's one thing that I see as a benefit, and that's what we attribute to seeing our non-grandfathered plans running better than our grandfathered plans.
Well, even if they do away with the deductible, I don't see our employees lining up for colonoscopies.
I don't think many people lined up for a colonoscopy, but it's definitely something that has to be done, for sure, just as far as being preventive and catching things as well.
Excuse me, may I ask, are we talking like option one, 1100 NG? Is that the non-grandfather you're referring to, the ones that are NG?
Yeah, so we, I hadn't even started like looking at the plan specifically. I was just kind of giving an overview, really, of just the difference between those two options. When you see non-grandfather, that's what the NG is. You do have a G2 option on there, and so that's staying grandfathered, but that's making like a 5% or less change in the employee's benefits, so that way you can retain the grandfather status. So that is an option there as well.
Toledo, through your research, do you have a recommend, recommendation that you're recommending to the court? And I know it's ultimately our decision, but you're closer to the...
If we're going to stay with the grandfathered plan, which is the court's decision, I would recommend that we stay with our existing plan. If looking to move to a non-grandfathered plan, my recommendation would be option one, 1100 NG. That one would be, that one actually lowers the prescription deductible to zero, which I know a lot of our employees, that's a big complaint, because they have to meet that $100 deductible for their prescription plan before their benefits kick in. So those would be my two recommendations. Stay with what we currently have, or if the court would like to move off the grandfathered plan, do the option one, 1100 NG.
Ashley, when are we supposed to make a decision, Ma?
June 30th is the due date for renewals to come in on time, so we can be on time with everything. And I agree with Toledo's recommendation because, as you were mentioning, the deductible, that's related to the pharmacy benefits. Employees are going to see that and feel that a lot sooner than even seeing the impact of the medical deductible being increased. So it's not going to be like an even swap, which is like, if you just look at the numbers, you're like, well, you're just moving this from here to here. But you're not going to see employees feel the impact of that change with the medical deductible being increased as much as seeing that reduction in the pharmacy deductible going away. That's going to be an added benefit to employees as well.
And I think it's page seven or eight of your packet. It'll say 2021 to 2022 alternate plan proposals. If you look at what we're currently getting now, benefit-wise, versus is what you would go to if you decided to go to a non-grandfathered plan, the deductible does increase for the employee just slightly, from 600 slash 900 to 750 to 1,000. TAC ran us a report. We only have about 65 employees, employees, spouse, dependents, who even meet their $600 deductible. And on average, or estimate, we have about 193 employees on medical. Well, we have full-time physicians that we could provide medical for.
That's 193 full-time?
Yeah, estimate, yeah. Jesse and I are finagling with a couple of numbers.
Okay. What about retired? Are they affected in here?
There's, we only have two retirees on our insurance right now. The rest of them are just on the dental, and the dental's only increasing $1.70.
And that plan, it creates about a savings to the county of about $12?
Not that one. That one actually... That one actually is a little bit more than what there, it's about, what, $3 and some change more.
Where did I get this $12 yesterday?
That was a different plan that we were talking about yesterday. You're looking at the option two.
I'm looking at option one. And now, I could have wrote it in the wrong place, but I'm looking at option...
There's two 1100 plans on the alternate plan.
I'm looking at the NG, RX4A NG.
Yeah, that one is actually increased more than what we say currently. Our current rate, if we say the current plan, is going to go to 833.58 per employee. That's the county's cost. If we did option one, which is the non-grandfathered plan that I would recommend, that's going to be taking it from the 833.58 and increasing it to 837. But the benefit coverage-wise is a better package for the employees.
It's a richer benefit, yeah.
They get better benefits. The county pays a tad bit more, but the county, the employees receive additional benefits, like those screenings that Ms. Ashley was talking about, that are possible.
And that's in the option one?
That's the option one. There's two, there's two 1100 non-grandfathered plans, option one and option two. One of them has a different prescription plan. So the one that I'm saying is option one, 1100 NG with RX4A NG. That one eliminates the deductible for the prescription program for our employees.
Either one of these plans, option one, does it have an impact on the providers?
Same network. You're not going to their own network or anything like that. It'll be the existing network.
And it lowers the office visit from 2030 to 25.
So you're looking at an overall annual increase based on the estimate of 193 full-time employees at 112,000. It's about 113,000 for the renewal rate with what we current, our current plan. And then the option one, the non-grand, non-grandfathered plan, is about 123,400.
123?
120,000, I'm sorry, 400.
Between where we are currently and the option we have, which is what you're recommending, option one.
If we stay with the grandfathered plan, I'm recommending that we stay with what we currently have. If the court would like to move to a non-grandfathered plan, then I'm recommending the option one of the non-grandfathered plan.
So either one, you're looking at an increase of 100, at minimum $100,000.
What we currently pay now. Currently, our rate was at 784.92 for the employee for medical.
But the non-grandfathered plan is a better, better plan for the employees.
So between the two, where we currently are now and the option one, non-grandfathered, if I understand you correctly, we're looking at a difference of about $7,000.
Oh, between the two, the, yes, the 830.
But it's more benefits to the employees.
That's what it sounds like.
And I would love to not pay anything for my prescription, but you always have to meet that deductible. How many chronic, do we, do, do, do we know if we have a lot of chronic people who, you know, have, pay out a lot in prescriptions?
I know that is the number one complaint when the employees talk to me about medical, is that prescription plan where they have to meet that deductible prior to any of their benefits kicking in.
Yeah, it can always be, at the first of year, it can always be a little shocking when you go in to get your meds, and you got to meet that deductible first.
Is there a benefit to staying with the grandfathered plan?
It's really honestly like a county choice.
I mean, is there, I guess, where it's not a price protection for any future versus, because it's going up too. So I just didn't know if there's, you know, really no, no benefit from a price standpoint in the future.
It's really just a county decision.
And if I understood you correctly, you said in the beginning, TAC was recommending for the years, we wasn't sure about the impact of affordable care plan.
Stay with the grandfather.
Then we stayed with the grandfather. But now that we know that effect over the last, what, did you say, 11 years?
So there's a date in it.
We have...
Yes.
It's almost like a phone plan. Now they got some better plans. We always think they're going to take away our unlimited calling.
So the non-grandfathered plan, that, that covers more of the, I don't know, how you say it? More significant preventative...
Care.
Care issues?
Yes.
At no cost to the employee?
Right. So if you're going in for your annual exam, just to check your blood work, all that kind of stuff, like that's covered at 100%. Scheduling a mammogram, covered at 100%. Prostate exam, all of those cancer screenings, those are all now covered at 100%. Immunizations as well, covered at 100% even for children, too.
Is there any waiting period on that? If we were to select that whenever this policy or this plan goes in effect, is there a waiting period before you can have all that done? So the day that it becomes effective, you could call your doctor?
Yes. October 1st, I could start scheduling those.
And actually, the benefit is not only to the client or the workers, but it's also a benefit for you all, you know, for its cost savings if they do more preventative. Because a lot of times, I guess, money is a hindrance when you're doing preventive care. You know, this is kind of inspires you. Maybe they, they won't have any problems with saying, I'll go get it done now that I don't have to pay any money.
Correct, yeah. With the non-grandfathered plan, like it eliminates that financial consideration or burden for trying to go get that care taken care of. So for us, it is a long-term strategy, so that way if something is happening, you're touching it earlier on, it's less cost for the county, less cost for the employees to take care of that event versus if it's more catastrophic.
If those increases have been the same, if we were on the non-grandfathered plan currently, would it have probably approximately increased by $50, or did it have a larger increase?
So I would definitely have to look into seeing kind of groups your size that have non-grandfathered plans and see specifically for this year how that ran. For, and kind of thinking about it, at the end of the day, when we're looking at, as a pool, when we're looking at the needed amount, we set that needed amount. And that, for this year, was 7.3% to make sure that we can pay all the future claims that are coming. So within that, then we look at each individual group. So as I was mentioning earlier, Grimes County is very similar to the pool average. So more than likely, you guys are going to see similar increases that the pool has unless we make some drastic, and I shouldn't say drastic, unless we make some changes. So it's not necessarily looking at the plan changes. Like, yes, we want to see that impact of people getting more of their preventive screenings and having less catastrophic events, having less high-cost claimants. All of those things are going to come into play, and that's going to help your loss ratio, which will help when we're looking at the individual group, that your increase is not going to be as close as the pool needed amount. So you guys got a 6.8 this year, and our pool needed amount was 7.3. We're hoping that we can reduce those high-cost claimants long-term. It's going to be a long-term strategy. So I don't want next year to come, and then it's like, the pool needed amount, say, again, is seven, which we don't want that at all. It's very rare that the pool needed amount is this high. But it was just COVID was, we had no idea what was going to happen with COVID. But say we come and the pool needed amount is five. Just staying the same trajectory, your loss ratio is the same. All of those things are the same. You're going to still be closer to that. We're hoping over three years, then now we're going to start to see that decrease, where you guys are pulling further away from the pool needed amount. So making this plan change is going to be a long-term strategy. I don't want you guys to think that it's going to be like an immediate fix with that. We're not going to tell you that at all. But it will be a long-term strategy to help you get in the right direction.
Well, as we're in the middle of our budget process for the next budget year, and one of the things that we're struggling with is cost of living adjustments, potential to increase salaries or not increase salaries. We're limited on our fundings. We don't know what our revenues are coming in. But based on my conversations with Toledo, based on what Ashley has shared with me, I'm going to make the motion that we go with option one of the non-grandfathered fund, because that's going to have an immediate impact of giving our employees and their families some financial relief in the event that they do need those services such as prescriptions. So with that, I'm going to make that motion. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by County Judge Joe Fowles, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. We're still open for further discussion, Commissioners. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. That motion carries. Please let the record note that Commissioner Walker is present, and the vote now is a 4-0 vote. Ashley, thank you very much. Toledo, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Ma'am?
I'm on the agenda.
All right. Agenda item number nine. Review, consider, and take action on Grimes County Vision Insurance Policy. See attachment number nine.
So TAC also offers a vision plan. That way, it would keep all of our medical, dental, and vision under one umbrella. Right now, we currently outsource our vision plan to National, I think it's NVA, National Vision Association, based out of New York. I did some comparison. They did a full quote for voluntary vision. This is an employee-paid plan. The county does not pick up any portion of their vision. However, if the county would like to do that, we should do that as well. I've turned in an Excel spreadsheet for you all. I just kind of took some comparison from what NVA offered and what Blue Cross Blue Shield offered. The price difference to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield for employee out of pocket is about $1.24. It's cheaper for the employee only, and cheaper if the employee has just an employee and spouse. But it does have a slight increase if you have employee and children or employee family to go with a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. There's about a $20 difference under the examinations section between NVA and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then if you start looking down further, you will see that there is a slight increase for co-pays for various items for the employee. So money-wise, it's cost, to me, in my opinion, it's more cost-effective if we stay with NVA. From a office standpoint, having everything tied under one umbrella, to me, is beneficial for the county as well. But I'm going to let Ms. Ashley kind of go over some of the benefits to switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield versus what we kind of currently have right now.
One of the questions I'm thinking about, does Blue Cross Blue Shield have a larger network than NVA? Or does NVA have a larger network than Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Um, I don't know the network for your current provider. With Blue Cross Blue Shield, there is a wide range of providers. And I was actually, I need to look that up on my phone, I was trying to Google the zip code. I was running into some issues. But I will pull that up, um, to answer that question specifically, just to let you know the providers in the area. Um, but even with also making the plan change with your medical, now an eye exam is covered at 100%. So whether or not they stick with your current provider or coming to TAC, when an employee goes to get their eye exams with, in-network provider with Blue Cross, there's no cost for that eye exam for glasses. Contacts, then that's when you have to use your vision plan. But for glasses, that exam now will be covered at 100%. So when you're even looking at the co-pays for vision care services, like, the Blue Cross plan is a $10 co-pay. Employees don't have to pay that if they go to a Blue Cross Blue Shield network provider.
So I, uh, I actually went to the eye doctor yesterday and...
How many fingers am I holding up?
At least three.
Okay.
So my doctor will take Blue Cross Blue Shield for the exam. But as far as the NVA, to get glasses or contacts, she doesn't recognize that, and you have to go to another.
You can get the eye exam from one doctor, but then you have to go get your prescription and contact this when another provider that actually takes NVA.
That's right. You know, if we do Blue Cross Blue Shield, it wouldn't, you know, we'd get it all at the same, same place. So I'd pay retail for contacts, and then I'd go somewhere else to get my glasses.
She and I talked about some of the experiences I had, uh, in using Blue Cross Blue Shield one year to cover the eye exam. There was no problem. The problem that I see now that we may run into is looking at the, uh, analysis that you did.
The co-pays.
The co-pays and the percentages off retail. I don't know what that retail may be at the time, polarized, but I do.
Those are more like your specialty, you know, type cases and stuff. Personally, I went and got a pair of glasses and used some of those. And it was about a 50% savings with our current insurance. I spent like $200 something dollars out of pocket to get one pair of single-vision glasses. But I added all of the transition lensing and all that kinda stuff to it. Your, if you have any type of eye situation that they deem medical, then it's my understanding that Blue Cross Blue Shield will cover that under the medical fix, right?
That's correct.
So if you have a, a medical problem, then it would pick up more versus what our current vision insurance plan will.
And, and I, I know here locally, Judge, you asked a question, but it, the, the provider that I've chosen to stick with, uh, in recent years has been TSO, and there are two or three locations in Bryan College Station. And I've been able to go to the doctor at the same TSO. So, um, the, the problem that I, that I ran into is that, um, over the years, my eyesight has, has, has weakened, and I ran into a few issues. So I do end up in some of these things that I don't know what that 20% may be, whereas these other costs are fixed, you know? And it kinda gives me an idea ahead of time of what I'm gonna be paying.
You, you're talking about the cost being fixed with the Blue Cross Blue Shield or the being fixed with the NVA?
With NVA. I haven't, I haven't had any issues.
She's talking about down the lens options, where it talks about polarize and index. NVA says that we pay $75 co-pay. So your columns, all of these are co-pays. So if you have single vision, it's a $15 co-pay versus a $25 co-pay through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Then if you have bifocals, that's an additional cost. So it's not just like you pay the $15 and you're one and done. It just, it depends on all the different options that you put on your glasses.
Like the polycarbonate, one, one, one is 25 versus 40, you know?
There are some cost difference. Contacts-wise, um, it's the same with the exception that NVA covers up to $150 worth of your contacts, and Blue Cross Blue Shield does $130, but like she said, now you don't pay.
Yeah, your eye exam for your glasses is covered at 100%. When you do your, if you're gonna purchase glasses and contacts, you can do that in the same year. One of them will just be 40% off. I personally used my plan, I saved a lot more than this year, but anyway, we won't go there. I understand you. Just gonna say that. I used my discount, my $130 for my frames, and then I was able to pay my co-pay for my lenses, and then I got 40% off for my contacts, for the cost of my contacts. So I can do that in the same year. Or if I wanted to get another pair of glasses, I can get a second pair of glasses and pay 40% off for that second pair too. So those are some of the benefits, um, within looking at how that plan does work. When I pull up the location, it says there's 59, um, providers in the area, and...
It's TSO one of them, because I would hate to have to change.
TSO is one, but I wanna say when, um, Grimes County has the benefit plan two, there was, there's two locations in, of TSO in Bryan College Station, and one of them is not. So I just need to figure out which one is the not. But there's, you know, LensCrafter, if you go to Target, you can get your glasses, like, all of those places are in-network if you go, um, to College Station for those things.
Our Target is not that big, Ashley.
Maybe that's it. My eye doctor, America's Best Eye Care Center, LensCrafter, Urban Optics, the optical, um, Target. I won't read through all the pages, I'm just gonna try to find the TSO and the best.
Well, I know the provider I used for 25 years didn't accept NVA when I became a county employee. And as a result, I reluctantly changed, uh, providers that did accept NVA.
Yeah, it was a little hard at first.
Yeah.
And it changed over the years too, because when I went back one year to one, they said we don't accept it, you know?
I guess that's why my initial question is, it's great if we go to a better plan, but it's too limited providers, then that's a hassle for our employees or families of having to change providers, because I, uh, I feel most of us, when it comes to our eyes, that's a pretty delicate part of our well-being, and we like to be comfortable with who we use. And you don't wanna, well, I don't wanna speak, I don't wanna insurance shop every time I need an eye exam or something like that. I want somebody with history of how my vision is today, what it's done, what it has been, potentially what it might be, so. What, Toledo, what is your recommendation?
I would like to recommend that we go with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Commissioners, what are, what are your thoughts?
And that's so you can stay, so you...
Well, I mean, after listening to Ms. Ashley talk, you know, it does provide, because you're combining it with your medical, and so there are a lot of benefits to having the Blue Cross Blue Shield vision as far as more providers, and then maybe if there's more medical, um, conditions going on, that the insurance is picking up more cost. And it saves, I mean, it's actually, if it's just the employees, which a lot of our employees are employees only, it actually is a savings to the employee, even if it's employee and spouse.
Right.
The only cost to increase for the employee upfront is if they have the family plan or employee and children.
And none of the costs are significant in increase. I mean, you're talking about a Coca-Cola or, you know, Jack in the Box hamburger.
And I have not, uh, received back, um, any information on our current provider of going to increase our plan this year or not. So this is based off our current year plan. I don't think I received those until August of last year. Last year, we didn't have an increase, but I don't know if they're increasing this year or not yet.
Well, you're also getting less for the actual pair of frames also with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And sometimes that can make a difference. I'm looking at the frame, frame cost difference, and it was another one. Frames and, I just saw it, Standard Progressive, those type of differences. When you have children, and you have a, more than one or two that have eye wear.
It could be an increase to them, those employees.
But I'm, I'm good on whatever y'all decide, but, um...
Are you good enough to make a motion?
No, I don't wanna make that motion. Because my motion, you might not like my motion. So it sounds like y'all like Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I personally would stay with NVA, because when I go in there, glasses cost enough money, and I want the biggest bang for the buck. Okay? So I'm gonna be looking for, glasses are going up in cost just like everything else. But, but you did say, you did not know, you, did you not hear back from them?
I have not heard from them on what it is. And I've also had some billing issues a couple of times with, um, NVA, with payments being misapplied, and then having to do a lot of life work to go back and figure out what happened. And that was a part of miscommunication on both of our parts. So I'm not saying it's solely NVA's problem. But this would alleviate billing issues, because we would pay it just like what we pay our TAC medical bill. Normally, we pay all of our medical bills a month ahead, which means we deduct from the current, the previous month to pay for the current month bill. And it's different with that with NVA. So when Ms. Lucy and I swapped, I was paying it as taking May deductions and paying a June bill, June deductions paying July, and there was a lapse in the bill, and it took three different departments to try to figure out what the miscommunication was. So, um, that's another reason why I would like to switch. But it will cost a little bit of an increase to employees based on the current numbers. I don't know what that would be when I get their current, you know, the new numbers.
But it, but it could cost a little bit more for the employees once you get the NVA quote.
It could, their price could go up.
Are we on the same deadline, Ashley, to make a commitment to this by June 30th?
Um, visions, there's a little more to look at, but not too much, just because those ID cards will have to be mailed out. And so making sure that we tie all of that with open enrollment and all of those things, and employees do get that information.
I mean, if push came to shove, what's, this is the last regular meeting of Commissioners' Court for the month.
And I'm open for change if y'all wanna, wanna try change, you know? Just remember, y'all want to try. So you gonna pay more for them, contact me and...
Yeah, but the people that only, really only like change are babies.
They don't what?
Really, the only, the people, the only people that like change are babies.
Oh.
When you change their diapers, you know?
Yeah. I, I said I'm open to it, but if it's any better, you know?
We could meet on the 30th if we had to. I, I guess...
Do you wanna table that one, and then get, let me see if I can find out for sure if those rates are gonna increase?
I think that's important to the decision-making.
Yeah, it could make a difference for families, you know, I don't know.
Do you think they'll be responsive? And I'm curious as to why they haven't been.
Um, well, we've been, I sent them the information on the bill discrepancy about a week or so ago, and I haven't heard back from them. It does take a little bit of time to get communication to them. I don't know if that's because they don't work in the office, if they're still remote working, being out of state. But it does take a couple of days, sometimes a week or so, to get a response back from them.
What state are they in?
New York.
Well, that explains it.
New York, somebody give them...
Get them ready.
But the plan, when did you request the plan? If there was gonna be change.
I'm gonna say, if I remember correctly, they sent me a letter last year around end of July or August saying that the rates were not gonna change.
So you didn't get an answer to that yet?
No, I have not received their rate charges. I can inquire about it and see. Normally, in the past, we haven't, because we haven't been able to provide vision through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And when I inquired this time, they said, yes, it was open for us to jump in if we wanted to add vision plan under the Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's been my understanding that it hasn't been opened in the past, and that's one of the reasons why it was never considered to do a one-stop shop with our medical, dental, and vision.
So this is gonna be new period? Is this a new, uh, for TAC also?
We've had, um, this vision plan is, is fairly new. We rolled this out two years ago.
Two years ago.
And we've been with NVA for as long as I've been here. And when we, I wanted to inquire about it, they said there was no vision plan with TAC, so this is something new now.
Yes.
I'm going to recommend that we table agenda item number nine at this time, with the hope that you get your response from NVA. And at this time, Cherie, get this rescheduled for the first meeting in July. I'm not gonna call a special meeting at this time, uh, not knowing if we're gonna have the NVA response back or not. Is that fair, Court?
Would that be okay, if it would be like around July 6th, where they could vote on it, especially?
I'm trying to, uh, I, that, that should be fine.
And, and as I'm saying, you know, if we got the, if we got from NVA and it was something that we really need to push hard on, then we could call a, a special meeting on the 30th. But I, I'd rather not, I'd rather just hold it for the 6th. Because I don't even know what courtroom space availability is, so. Is that agreeable, Commissioners? All right, we're gonna table agenda item number nine. Ashley, thank you for your input and, uh, time, and Toledo, thank you for your data research. We're gonna move to agenda item number 10, Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker. Consideration and possible approval of the plat of Reagan's Run, Phase 3, located in Precinct Number 2, Attachment Number 10.
Good morning, everyone. This is a small plat, it's only two lots. This is on County Road 222, just off of 1049.
Which one are you looking at, is that two? Let's go.
This was originally intended to be a somewhat larger plat, but then they sold the six acres on the corner separately. So it got, cut down to just two, two lots. Reagan's Run subdivision, um, started a year and a half ago. They've been building properties along, just fronting on 220. They've got several places, uh, on the west side of 220. This one, they've jumped over to the other side, uh, and it's in that same vicinity with the Horseshoe and subdivision that they did also. It's a simple plat, we're recommending it be approved as shown.
Did Commissioner Dobinsky have any input or review on this?
He didn't have any comments.
But it does meet all of our road bridge requirements for refunding?
No, no real construction at all, you know, there's just basements on the road.
So did I understand you say that the other portion of the, that was in here before is on the other side of the road?
Yes, ma'am. They, they have, um, I wanna say it's a 20-something acre parcel across the road that they've been developing in phases. Taking down in phases because of the tax rollback on agricultural land. So that, kinda strategizing, as they sell things, they'll take down another section and build a few more lots. I'm looking to approve that of Reagan's Run Phase 3.
I have a motion before the court on agenda item number 10 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. Agenda item number 11, consideration and possible approval of a plat of Apostolos, Number 3 subdivision, located in Precinct 2, Attachment Number 11.
This is another small subdivision, it's only three lots. This is located on County Road 351, in the same neighborhood where Mr. Costlow has been. has been direction of another plant in recent years also. Again, we have gone through the plat and it does meet our criteria and we're recommending approval.
Do you know, uh, the two side plots, the 2.044 acres on either side that have the 60-foot easement going in, are those currently occupied?
Uh, there's an existing trailer on one of them. The, you see on, on the survey, they labeled some, uh, some power lines that go to the existing structure. The, the other lot had a trailer on it that's being removed.
Just the way it's set up, I hope everybody that buys in there, they've become good neighbors otherwise.
He, he's fond of doing this kind of a configuration. It, it works, it meets our criteria. Because they do have public water available. But it's a little unusual if people want to build back behind their neighbors.
So is this a continuation or is this a, a separate piece of property than the previous?
No, the, the last plat you saw for Mr. Costlow was across the road. A very similar configuration. But he's not treating this as, you know, just another phase of, he's treating this completely separate.
It's a separate.
And there's no backdoor to these lots either, but?
They back up to a private road.
Right.
Deep Woods Lane, uh, connects over to Crown Ranch. There was some plot back some years ago that Crown Ranch would build a public road along there to access 1774. That's apparently fallen by the wayside. They would have access to that if it became public.
Has Commissioner Dobinsky seen these?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So right now, that's still a private road to the back?
Is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 11?
I motion that we, um, approve the plat of Apostolo, Number Three subdivision, located in Precinct Two.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries, go to Agenda Item Number 12. Consideration and possible action to authorize Road and Bridge to move unused salary line item money to the temporary seasonal line item and authorize the Auditor's Office to prepare the appropriate line item transfer. Okay, that, uh, Harry, you might as well start off and then Jesse, feel free to join in. We had some discussion on this yesterday that, I'll let you go first.
Recently, the court approved transferring unused salary money to overtime. And that got me thinking, we have a significant chunk of unused salary money because of the superintendent's retirement that I would like to utilize. I would prefer to utilize it in the form of part-time summer help to try and keep up with the, some of the shredding and some of those operations, help out with flagging and things like that during our busy season. We are running behind because of the weather. You know, May was pretty much a loss cause the vegetation is gonna be a real issue this year. So we gotta be useful, or a beneficial use of those funds. At the time I put it on the agenda, the Governor's Office had not had time to research but the ins and outs of doing that. But I didn't want to lose any more time or, you know, we're month into summer already. What I had was requesting, uh, that we could have four part-time employees at a 29-hour a week level where they wouldn't have benefits, you know, $10 an hour and projecting that we could have them for no more than eight weeks. And that works out to $9,280 plus or minus.
Plus what?
Plus or minus.
Okay.
My calculation is not.
Don't, don't show calculations.
Are you gonna be able to find people for 10 bucks an hour?
I'm thinking high school kids, basically. People that have grown up and working on a ranch can run, you know, can run a shredder or we can use them to help with the flagging and some of the, the simpler, you know, labor operations. Just to free up some of the full-time employees to do, you know, more beneficial things.
And would this be a part-time, everyday kind of gig?
Well, for 29 hours a week, they'd be working basically three days a week. For, you know, the crews are 10 hours a day right now.
Is, what, is it attractive to a retiree? I keep hearing you say high school, but?
I mean, my thinking is, I'm thinking high school kids, but retirees or, or people that just don't wanna work full-time or need a little supplemental income in the summer. You know, that have the, the right kind of capabilities.
Okay, I just didn't want somebody thinking that you're just looking for high school students, but you could be looking at.
No, we're, you know, people that can do the work, have the, particularly I'd be looking for people that can, can run a tractor, run a shredder. And there are a lot of folks around here that have done that, you know, you have to watch out on those. Everything can be changed.
These are hair dishing tractors?
The same tractor as everybody else gets.
Jesse, you had some concerns, would you show those concerns?
So at the time that they contacted the office, um, my response to that was those positions have not been created for this fiscal year. And that's a creation of a new position. It's taken money from another position and placing it into a new position. And according to our policy, um, that goes against it on page 72. So my concern, I understand, I, there's a big difference between part-time and temporary. So our Agenda Item reads the temporary seasonal because it was just for the summer months. Um, and I understand him being able, I don't want to tie his hands to where he's unable to use that for a temporary position. However, it does go against policy. So I did contact HR and we had a meeting with the judge in regards to that. And we have found a way to, um, because they were, they've been able to do this in the past when we budgeted differently, we didn't have positions. It was a, they had funds in a temporary or they had a line item for a temporary, a seasonal employee. And so what we would do is just transfer funds from unused salaries because even laps in salaries, maybe they had a vacancy for a while and they didn't hire in, so they had those funds. We would transfer money from that salary line to the seasonal in the past. And come before court, obviously. But now because of our policy and how it reads and because of how we budget by position.
And we budget by position to be in compliance with the F I software?
We do, so it's a whole different. And HR can, we came up with a wording to the policy, to amend the policy, to have that ability.
And that's not on the agenda today to?
Just for review.
Okay, that's not on the agenda today for us to, uh, address the policy and make the change. But because it is in conjunction with what Harry's requesting and kind of the issue that auditors have, I would, Toledo, like you to share what we have and how it's now changed that might permit Harry to do this.
He's referring to him as a part-time.
Right.
And to me, part-time is a more permanent type position than your seasonal or temporary seasonal, temporary have a start and end date. When you have part-time, if they were to work consecutively for some time period, more than 30 hours, then you roll into having to pay benefits under the law. I know Mr. Harry said that he would keep them at 29.
Even part-time receives retirement though.
I mean, uh, medical benefits.
Yeah, my intention was temporary seasonal.
Okay, um, so I kinda just, real quick on the whim, because I wasn't aware that this was being placed on the agenda until it was on the agenda. So I didn't really have a whole lot of time to look into the policy and meet with people until yesterday when Jesse got with me. But I came up with, under 7A, which is on page 72, seven is the one where it talks about the compensations taken from vacant position. What Harry is asking to do would be a direct violation of the policy the way that it reads right now. Because those positions have been vacated and he's wanting to take those funds and create a new position. It's not like what happened with the district clerk where they just took lapsed salary or excess salary funds and moved it into an overtime line. That's completely, that's not apples to apples. So I came up with a 7A that says, current fiscal year lapsed and/or unused salaries may be used to fund temporary slash seasonal positions within the same fiscal year. The elected official or department head's request will be submitted to the Human Resource Department and placed on Commissioners Court Agenda for consideration. That kind of follows the same suit of what we do when they want to make changes within their salary structure or rearrange their office structure. So that's the same verbiage that you'll find in that section, how it's placed on Commissioners Court.
So because of us changing software and we now budget positions, right? That's what I hear, hear you saying?
We now budget by position and because of our policy and how.
But because we have been doing this in the past, under the, the software created a problem, it sounds like a little bit.
The policy changed.
The policy?
Yes, the policy was changed.
Did we, we did this last year?
No, in previous.
Not in my department.
In previous years.
In previous years?
Yes, but the policy.
How were you handling that last year? Cause I remember you, um, having seasonal help.
We did not last year.
Not you, you didn't have it last year?
We haven't had seasonal help since I've been here.
Really?
I, okay, well, then it must have been before you that we've done that in the past. But our policy has changed and so number seven was added. And that's where it states that monies cannot, um, they, let's see, they may not take monies available from a position filled at a lower rate or I'm just any position, basically, and provide compensation adjustment or compensation adjustments to other positions with the remaining budgeted money. So we haven't created a new position, I mean, it's creating a new position mid-year. However, we, I mean, I understand his need for it and I don't want to, but I also don't want it to violate policy.
And we wrote that policy for a particular reason?
We did.
Uh huh. So now you're saying y'all have looked at the policy and so this adjustment, would it impact the reason why we wrote the policy the way we wrote it in the first place?
I don't think, I mean, I, it actually, it makes it.
Clearer.
Clearer to this specific year in use. So you're not creating a position that you're gonna be liable to fund year after year for seasonal or part-time or temporary help, whatever you wanna call it. Because it specifically states may be used for the same current year. So current year funds may be used to fill a position within the same current year. So you're not, you're not tying the court's hands to say you're gonna be funding this year after year after year.
And it probably would address some of the stuff we've been hearing in budget hearings too, a little bit. We talked about, a little bit about seasonal and temporary help. You know, kinda helped me find that for everybody.
They should be brought before court and so court is aware of what is going on.
That's why I said that it needs to be placed on the Commissioners Court Agenda for consideration. That's just true transparency.
And I asked Toledo, because I knew we were gonna have this discussion this morning on Agenda Item Number 12, I asked Toledo to get the language together possibly so that y'all could look at it, we could have a little bit of discussion because it's tied to what Harry's trying to do. But we can't vote on it and make the change today, but we could. Toledo, if you get the language to Cherie, we can put it on the 6th. Harry, I know you're out next week, but you, if we felt like we were.
I'll be here for that next meeting.
In July, no, I understand that. But you could possibly get the ball rolling with your superintendents to see if they can start finding people and at least talking to people. So, so if we did approve it on the 6th, you can bring people on the 7th to go to work.
And that was my thinking, that if y'all would give us, I knew we didn't have the line out and transferred prepared today and there were some research that had to be done, but if y'all would give us to go ahead, we can go ahead and start locating those people. I mean, we're, you know, a good portion of the summer's already gone.
Right.
You know, the eight weeks is probably optimistic at this point. A lot of these, you know, again, if they're, they're high school students or college students, they'll be.
They'll be going back to school.
Before the end of August. If we can get the ball rolling and then at the next meeting, you know, I mean, the policy is necessary, that'll be fine with me.
Well, Commissioners now have something to think about, language, look at them in front of them. And if anything else comes up between now and then, if you'll get it to the Commissioners and myself. And then Toledo, if you'll get language to get that on the July 6th Agenda.
It's the 7th.
The 7th, July 7th Agenda, then we can make that decision. Fair enough, Harry?
That's fair.
Okay. So with that, then we'll take no action on Agenda Item Number 12, or it be tabled until July 7. We'll now go, thanks, Toledo. We'll now go to Road and Bridge Report. See, I forgot you last time, I didn't forget you this time.
We've had a run of some dry winter finally. We used it to get caught up on paving the roads, pretty well caught up now. The rain last night didn't help, but we're back to starting. We're back to working on, we're setting up roads for paving season. Again, we're behind where I wanted to be because of the, we should be actually paving already. It's the way the mountain is cooperating. We did have the storm last night, we do have a lot of trees down, we're picking up a lot of trees this morning and that always is a distraction from our regular activities.
Sure.
But can't help it. Elsewhere, we're continuing to monitor, uh, blue day solar. They have been working on their roads.
Have they been working on the roads to your satisfaction?
I'm not a hundred percent satisfied with what they've done at this point. One thing they have done, they came in with a proposal basically to use some of their internal roads to divert their heavy traffic and do their loading and unloading, which has been one of the problems. People complaining about blocking the roads while they're unloading trucks. So they're working on that, which I think will definitely help.
Good.
They have put out some law, they have done some things that are beneficial. They haven't done as much yet as I would, would like to see them do. But they have done some work under drainage. So they're, they're trying, I think they could do more.
Do we need to call them?
I'm gonna talk to them. And I've asked Scotty, keep a real close eye on them.
Okay.
And also give me our motto, is keep a close eye on the traffic out there and trying to control the route that they're using and make sure the truck drivers aren't using long roads.
While you're in Colorado enjoying cooler weather and lower humidity, let's, let Scotty know to call either Commissioner Mallett or myself if he needs assistance in your absence.
Aware of that.
Good luck in Colorado. They're having some temperature changes there.
Be a nice change of weather, this humidity likely has been miserable. Any questions?
Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 13, discuss and take action to approve Knights of Columbus Council 4054 and/or the Columbus Club Association of Anderson, Inc., both nonprofit organizations to contract to operate bingo games, sync, uh, Attachment 13. I had a, I had a request from a citizen in, Rick Atkinson. He had sent me a letter. I had, had brief discussions with our county attorney whether any issues that we should be concerned about. And if I recall our conversation, John, uh, it wasn't any legalities that were being broken or anything of that sort. So on the basis of that, I've put this on the agenda to make the court aware of this request. And again, it's going to, it's nonprofit, they're using this for a fundraiser. And again, it's going to, it's nonprofit, they're using this for a fundraiser. They don't know how often they're going to be doing this, but they're not going to be running the bingo hall over, every night. I think initially they're talking about once a month.
Is this, I guess this needs to be approved by the county for this, this to take place?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be approved, but I thought it's because it's...
What's going on?
It's, I just wanted y'all to be aware. I was okay to give him my blessing, but then I got to thinking about it. I didn't want to cause an issue for any of you in your precincts or your areas. This, this is proposed to be the 4054 Hall, which is the one here in Anderson. The one there in Anderson.
Is it there?
It's over there.
Down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's around the corner, down there. Right. Okay. But it's in Anderson. But Mr. Fultz, I'll take legal advice at this time?
Judge, you know, many things that I forget, but I'd forgotten our conversation. I got a call from Commissioner Cox yesterday about it and there are some specific requirements if bingo is to be permitted about the county holding an election for bingo. And then, there's also a license that the person to run bingo is supposed to obtain from the Texas Lottery Commission. So, I'm not really sure what they're asking to do and I'm not sure, what troubles me, I think, about the letter is I'm requesting a formal written determination regarding the legality of a nonprofit organization to operate or contract to operate a bingo game in Greenwich County. There are lots of folks who would like to call my office and ask me how to get a divorce or other, how to sue their neighbor, one citizen against another, but the county attorney's office is for the benefit of county officials and county employees and sometimes I have to have that conversation. But we're not in a position to provide legal advice to say to these folks, yeah, it's legal or no, it's not legal. And so, I'm not really sure what the request is.
Well, my understanding from Rick, the legal advice that he's looking for is actually a letter of approval that we're allowing them to do that. And my thought was that I'm okay to do that, to give him a letter of approval to run that fundraiser for that organization, but I wanted to be the court aware of it. I do know that one of the organizations, and I don't recall which one, was it Poor Boys, Friends of Greenwich County, was it Go Texan or whoever, did a fundraiser over at the fairgrounds where they had a company that came in and they actually had roulette wheels and crap tables and blackjack tables and they ran it for that evening. Then the company left, the group, the nonprofit group, whatever they made out of it, they made out of it and that was that. So, I know we have done it in the past and I thought, well, it's probably not a problem to do it in the future. I just wanted to make, because I wasn't county judge when that occurred, although I was a participant in that, so I don't know all the details. And that's why I had called you, even though you had forgotten your call with me.
I'm sure not the first phone call that you and I've had that I've forgotten.
Well, okay. But anyway, and your initial comment to me was you saw no problem with it. And then, I don't know if I said to you or if I said to myself, but I'm going to throw it before the court anyway. And that's what I've done.
And so, what I hear you saying, there's a process if it's to be approved by Commissioners Court?
I'm saying that when you talk about bingo, that there's a, there are a lot of things that go along specifically with bingo. And it's permissible specifically by a change that occurred to the Constitution, but it's regulated by the Texas Lottery Commission. And in order to have bingo, a legal game of bingo, other than one in the House where there are less than 15 people apparently, which is an exception, there's supposed to be an election by the county or by the municipality in the county. I've never participated in any of that and didn't know any of that until Commissioner Cox and I talked yesterday. There happens to be a TAC publication. I don't, you guys may have seen mine's dated 2019, short interest to common questions. Well, I don't think this bingo question is so common, but anyway, I sent that to Commissioner Cox yesterday for him to look at. I guess I would go back to, if somebody said, I would like to have the county authorize me to have a shooting range, there's no mechanism for the county to simply say, we bless your shooting range, right? And so, that, my fear is, are we giving them legal advice to say, this is a valid game when potentially they haven't done the things that I'm not even familiar with? You know, as far as how do you get, it's an application that you have to submit to the Texas Lottery Commission to get a license to run a bingo parlor, to run bingo. I'm just not familiar with any of those things. And so, my fear is that if we're giving somebody a blessing, then where does that stop when anybody else says, hey, I want to do this thing and there are regulations about this, but I'd like to have the blessing of the county to say I can do it regardless?
Okay. I don't have a problem calling Rick and asking him, because they weren't, the Masonic Lodge itself was not going to run the game. They were having a company come in and do that. So, I don't know if that company has a license or meets the state requirements. Commissioner Cox, undoubtedly you've done some research or study or...
No, I hadn't done, I just questioned if there's anything that we needed to do specifically. It's not the Masonic Lodge either, it's the Nights of Columbus.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right.
The, and then John sent me the wording from the manual or the book that he's looking at right now, but I mean, I don't, I'm all in for a good game of bingo, but I think there's a process that has to take place to have a good game of bingo.
Let me just, if I can just read these first two paragraphs about bingo. Texas voters approved an amendment to the Texas Constitution in 1989 authorizing the legislature to allow and regulate bingo games conducted by churches, synagogues, religious societies, volunteer fire departments, fraternal organizations, and certain nonprofit organizations. The law to be enacted by the legislature was required to contain a local option component for counties, justice precincts, and municipalities. See Texas Constitution, Article 3, Section 47. The Texas Constitution, the Texas Legislature adopted Chapter 2001 of the Occupations Code, the Bingo Enabling Act, including provisions setting out the local option process. And then, it goes on to say, what's the process to legalize or prohibit bingo within a county or justice of a peace precinct? The Commissioners Court on its own authority may order a bingo local option election under Occupations Code 2001.651. Additionally, upon receipt of a petition signed by registered voters of the county, equalling at least 10% of the vote for governor in the county at the preceding gubernatorial election, the Commissioners Court is required to order a bingo local option election, either legalizing or prohibiting bingo. The election may be county-wide within a justice precinct. Now, I'll stop there. I'm just telling you something so foreign to me that it seems to me that there, it begs the question of whether these things apply. And I'm not even familiar with a process by which you could ask the Commissioners Court to, you know, give a blessing to people.
Unless it's within the municipality of Anderson, so...
Yeah, could be, but that would be, the municipality would have to have the same election.
Yeah.
Right.
But it said may require, doesn't say shall.
May require?
Didn't that what you read at the beginning there?
No, the Commissioners Court on its own authority may order a bingo local option election.
Right. May order the election. That doesn't say we're required to.
Right. But it suggests that essentially if you don't have the election, then you can't allow bingo. Additionally, upon receipt of a petition signed by voters, equalling at least 10% of the vote for governor in the county, Commissioners Court is required to order the election.
It's required.
Maybe this is one of those deals we should have said, go ahead and do it and ask for forgiveness instead of permission. I don't, you know...
I always want to try and follow it. The law, if there's a statute that says it has to have an election, that's it.
Yeah, and I apologize, Judge, if I misled you and I apologize if I've forgotten our conversation, but...
That's all right.
I talked to Commissioner Cox yesterday. It just, I didn't recall a conversation about bingo previously and this question has never come up. Obviously, I don't want the court to bless something if the proper requirements haven't been followed.
Sure.
I just don't know what this person has done or is going to do for this particular game and I'm not familiar with why they're asking you to bless their bingo game, unless they're asking you a whole election.
They, I mean, at first, it was a phone call or a, he asked his wife to talk to me, his wife talked to me. I said, okay, but I need a little bit more information, thus the letter. And all he was wanting to do is to make sure that it was okay for them to do it. And my conversation was, I don't see a problem with it, but I'm going to put it before the court. Because as Commissioner Cox just said, I, he didn't want to violate the law, I don't want to violate the law. But I wasn't aware of any law that would prohibit them from doing a fundraiser in a nonprofit organization. And again, I go back to my experience when they had the casino night. Toledo, do you remember that?
Here it goes.
Yeah.
Friends of Greenwich County.
Was it Friends of Greenwich County? Okay, thank you, Connie. So, it's Friends of Greenwich County, which is a 501(c)(3). And I know we didn't have an election for that. I'm not sure how they got permission to do that, but they did have a company that does that sort of thing.
They just did it. I mean, it could have been they didn't have to get permission because maybe they didn't know at that time and I don't know how far back that was.
Well, and that's not bingo. I mean, so this is, this is specific change to the Texas Constitution about bingo and there are a couple of other things in here raffles, but we're talking about a casino night where I don't know what you want. I don't know what you've got, if anything. Maybe you played with chips and it was just entertainment and you got nothing. Bingo seems to be a specific item that the legislature is concerned about regulating. That's all I can tell you. I'm not very familiar with this, other than pretty much everything I've told you today.
Well, if they're considering using licensed operators, I think the licensed operator would probably know whether they can do something.
And that's why, that's why I said I'm willing to give you...
Well, that's what I mean, you know, if it's something, be more specific of what the county could do or at least do. I don't...
And I'm more than happy to call Rick, get him to give me, get me in contact with this licensed company and I can talk to them.
I apologize for misleading you, if I did. When did they want to do this by Jesse?
Commissioner Cox, I think they wanted to start doing it sooner than later, but I don't think they're going to do it till they, I know it's okay. And I stand corrected because it is Nights of Columbus.
And I was going to say, maybe the difference was the frequency. What you're talking about was probably some annual event, whereas this is an ongoing event, whether it's monthly or quarterly.
Well, in fairness to this organization, I don't think they know. It just depends on how big of, if they have three people show up, you know, on Friday night to play bingo, they probably will eliminate it. Okay, we're going to table this item until I get more research done. Rick, if you're watching this online, I'm sorry, my friend, but it is what it is. Cherie, I hope to have it by the 6th of July, but I don't know. 7th of July. Agenda Item Number 14, Consider and Take Action Regarding Burn Ban and Authorize County Judges Signatory. We've been staying pretty moist. I know there's been a lot of hay put on the ground, but all of it's on the ground right now, not rolled and baled, is wet hay. So, I'm going to propose we take no action. Is there, you have an agreement with that? Okay, no action. Are there any, Agenda Item 15, are there any updates on the strategic plan? Hearing done, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 16. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Please adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 16 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.